We'll now call a common council meeting of November 21st to order. Roll call, please.
Alderman Kerkowski.
Here.
Lorick.
Here.
Ritz.
Here.
Marshall.
Here.
Gail.
Here.
Guzekowski.
Here.
Everybody, please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. Jeff, Steve, you want to start us out?
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Okay, item three is approval of minutes of 11:723. If everybody take a few moments, go through that. And when you're satisfied, there's no errors, omissions, or discussions, motion?
Marshall moves to approve the minutes of November 7th, 2023.
Guzekowski will second.
Roll call.
Alderman Lorick.
Aye.
Ritz.
Aye.
Marshall.
Aye.
Gail.
Aye.
Guzekowski.
Aye.
Kerkowski.
Aye.
And item four is recognition of mayoral proclamation for Small Business Saturday, November the 25th, 2023. Catherine, would you please read that in the record?
Certainly. Mayoral proclamation, Small Business Saturday, November 25th, 2023. Whereas the government of Oak Creek, Wisconsin celebrates our local small businesses and the contributions they make to our local economy and community. According to the United States Small Business Administration, there are 33.2 million small businesses in the United States, representing 99.7% of firms with paid employees, and they are responsible for 62.7% of new net, of net new jobs created from them since 1995. And whereas, small businesses employ 46.4% of the employees in the private sector in the United States. And whereas, 68 cents of every dollar spent in a small business in the United States stays in the local community, and every dollar spent at small businesses creates an additional 48 cents in local business activity as a result of employees and local businesses purchasing local goods and services. Whereas, 72% of consumers reported that Small Business Saturday 2022 made them want to shop and dine at small independently-owned retailers and restaurants all year long. And whereas, the city of Oak Creek supports our local businesses that create jobs, boost our local economy, and preserve our communities. And whereas, advocacy groups, as well as public and private organizations across the country, have endorsed the Saturday after Thanksgiving as Small Business Saturday. Now therefore, I, Daniel J. Bukiewicz, mayor of the city of Oak Creek, Wisconsin, do hereby proclaim November 25th, 2023, as Small Business Saturday, and urge the residents of our community and communities across the country to support small businesses and merchants on Small Business Saturday and throughout the year, dated this 21st day of November, 2023.
Thank you, Catherine. Anyone from the council, anything on small business?
Love them.
Yep, you know what? Everybody was a small business at one time, whether you were Microsoft, Apple, Amazon, you name it. They all started as a small business. We need to support that as much as we can. There are neighbors, our relatives, other folks that live in the city and depend on, on your shopping habits going forward. So as you take some time this shopping season for Christmas, particularly the 25th on Black Friday, or is it the 24th this year? Either way, get out there, shop locally, and support your friends and neighbors, so. No action is needed, as that is a mayoral proclamation. And we will move right on into our first public hearing. That is consideration of a conditional use permit submitted by Martin Ventura, UW Madison Extension, Milwaukee County, for a conditional use permit for the community garden plots for rent on the property at 1800 East Forest Hill. Catherine?
Public hearing number one is to consider requests submitted by Martin Ventura, UW Madison Extension, Milwaukee County, for a conditional use permit for community garden plots for rent on the property at 1-800-EAST FOREST HILL AV. Applicant is Martin Ventura, UW Madison Extension, Milwaukee County. Property owner, Milwaukee County Park Commission. Therefore, as the legal description, date of notice, October 25th, 2023.
Thank you. Doug?
Thank you, and good evening. My name is Doug Seymour. I'm the director of community development for the city, and this is a public hearing and request by the University of Wisconsin Extension and the Milwaukee County Urban Agriculture Program for garden plots, rental garden plots for the property at 1800 East Forest Hill Avenue. You can see the property outline and red on your screen. The proposal is for approximately 40 plots ranging from 20 by 20 to 30 by 30. With, there's three larger parcels, which are proposed to operate as little microfarms about a quarter acre each. You can kind of see on the overhead, on the slide, how that is proposed to lay out with its access off of East Forest Hill Avenue. The only structures would be a 10 by 20 wash station and a 8 by 10 garden shed. There would be portable restrooms that would be available throughout the season, which would be taken off the property when off-season. So any future structures, would we be required to apply for building permits? And there's some additional narrative included in your packet, which further describes the proposal. The planning commission did review this at the meeting on October 24th, and they did recommend approval of this conditional use permit. So with that, this is a public hearing. Anyone has any questions or comments regarding the proposed conditional use permit for the property at 1800 East Forest Hill Avenue? Please approach the microphone, give your name, address, proceed to address your question, and or comment to the common council. This public hearing is now open.
Thank you, Doug. As Doug said, this will be the first call for the public hearing. Anybody wishing to speak, please approach podium. Sir, we'll need your name and address.
I'm William Lambrecht, 1400.
William, you can pull the microphone up.
Okay. My name's William Lambrecht. I live on, off 13th Street by Wilson Park. I'm an elderly person, obviously, but a question I had about that permits for a building of any sort? Because if I put up like a four-foot-by-four-foot shed to keep my tools in, do I need to get a permit for that?
Doug, you want to answer that one?
Yeah, I guess at this point, the answer would be yes, because we, we do have shed permits throughout the city. So I mean, if you're, if you're putting up a structure of any type, there would be required permits, yes.
Even if it's not a permanent structure?
I believe it goes by size.
I mean, we can take a look at it more, in more detail, but based on the information that I have, just talking with this evening, I'd say yes.
Okay, thank you.
Second call, anybody wishing to speak? Third and final call for the public hearing. Okay, we will close the public hearing and move on to item six, which is consideration of an ordinance approving that conditional use permit for the garden plots for rent on the property at 1800 East Forest Hill Avenue. Turn it over to council. Steve?
Thank you, Mayor. For those who are unaware of, of why we have this going here on Forest Hill, it's because the previous community garden was, shall I say, evicted by the FAA, because they had, they had one up there by the dog park, and FAA said, can't do it. So they had to find a place to move. They had started to, to farm there without the permit, and then once the city caught up with the UW extension and kind of filled them in on what they needed to do, they, they got everything done and did it the right way. So I did have some residents call, wanted to know why it wasn't being allowed, or what was going on, and so. So the community does appreciate it. They were, like I said, they were evicted by the FAA, so this is a replacement, lot of land for, for that purpose.
Is that it, Steve?
That's it, thank you.
Okay. Greg, Chris, you guys want to bring up planning at all?
Sure, it was discussed in planning. There was a couple neighboring residents that brought up some questions and concerns. However, the applicant did explain that what is currently there is, is all that they're going to be doing. They're not going to be cutting down any trees or anything around the neighboring property lines or anything. So, and as Steve said, that this is kind of already in operation. They're just looking to formalize this through the process.
Greg got it, and Steve, so. Yeah, this did run through planning a couple times, and a large group came out. It's been working the land. It's wildly popular, great asset for Oak Creek, actually. Seems well organized, and it's becoming quite a community effort down there. Some people are from Oak Creek, others are from metro area, but good use of land, so. There's no further discussion, motion?
Kerkowski, make a motion to adopt ordinance number 3085, approving a conditional use permit for garden plots for rent on the property at 1800 East Forest Hill Avenue.
Lorick, seconds.
Roll call.
Alderman Ritz.
Aye.
Marshall.
Aye.
Gail.
Aye.
Guzekowski.
Aye.
Kerkowski.
Aye.
Lorick.
Aye.
Item seven is the 2024 executive draft budget. Public hearing, Catherine, please read that in.
Certainly. City of Oak Creek, notice of public hearing, 2024 executive draft budget, Tuesday, November 21st, 2023, at 7:00 PM. Notice is hereby given that on Tuesday, November 21st, 2023, the common council of the city of Oak Creek will meet in the Civic Center Council Chambers at 840 South 6th Street at 7:00 PM for the purpose of holding a public hearing on the 2024 executive draft budget. The purpose of the public hearing is to solicit public comment on the city's 2024 annual property tax levy and budget. Persons wishing to participate in the meeting may attend in person. Persons who wish to view the meeting live without participating may visit the City of Oak Creek YouTube page via livestream. Persons requiring other reasonable accommodations may contact the city. Requests should be made as far in advance as possible. A summary of the 2024 executive draft budget is published herewith, and public notice is hereby given that the budget detail is available for public inspection at the city clerk's office at the City of Oak Creek Civic Center, 840 South 6th Street, Oak Creek, Wisconsin, during the hours of 7:30 AM and 4:00 PM, Monday through Friday. The proposed water and sewer utility proprietary fund budget is not included in this notice. The Board of Public Works and Capital Assets reviewed the proposed budget at their regular meeting on Tuesday, October 10th, 2022, 2023, pardon me, dated this 20th day of October, 2023.
Thank you, Catherine. Max?
So thank you, Mayor. Max Gagin, Assistant City Administrator and Comptroller. So before you tonight is ordinance number 3086, which would adopt the 2024 budget and make certain appropriations. Going to give a brief presentation, just give a summary of what's included in the budget, and then talk about some of the programmatic and tax implications. So just a high-level summary, the budget does include a 3% wage adjustment for all city employees. You can see how that is split out for police and fire union employees, and that's per their collective bargaining agreements. And then again, for all other full and part-time employees. It does include some market required wage adjustments, as well as adjustments based off increased responsibilities in the building capacity and resilience in our city organization plan. We did include some wages for a part-time building inspector to conduct state plan reviews and inspections for the Inspection Services Division, a position that was created in January of this year, and has been a great asset to that team, as well as increased wages and hours for the police department's community resource coordinator position to meet increased demand for community-oriented policing programs and services. And then lastly, public safety staffing plan that includes the additions of six police officers, one detective, one dispatch supervisor, and funding for the police aid program, as well as the addition of four firefighter paramedics, one part-time fire inspector, and funding for the cadet intern. So just providing a little bit of details again on the public safety staffing plan, the addition of the positions mentioned on the prior slide. And essentially, it is to increase the minimum staffing for each of the three shifts by one. So you'll see an effect that it's a 25% increase in the police department's first shift staffing, with an increase in the minimum staffing, about 17%. 15% increase in overall staffing on second shift, 17% increase in minimum staffing, so six to seven. And then 10% increase in staffing on third shift, 20% increase in the minimum staffing, five to six. So all trying to guarantee that approximately 17 to 20% increase in the number of patrol hours on the road, 24/7, 365 in our community. You see some changes to the detective bureau as well, 20% increase in their staffing, 50% increase in their minimum staffing from two to three. And then again, funding for the police aid program. You know, we're all aware that there's challenges recruiting our next public safety professionals, and we've come to find that trying to recruit them, get them interested in the professions earlier has really paid dividends, so. A really increasing number of positions, as well as compensation, so we can build a pipeline of future police officer candidates. On the fire department side, the addition of four firefighter paramedics, one part-time fire inspector, and funding for the cadet intern program. This increases total shift staffing by 13%, so from 15 to 17 folks. Provides dedicated support to the mobile integrated health program. Adds part-time fire inspector to alleviate strain on utilizing line personnel for inspections. Intentions to have two FTEs dedicated to the fire prevention program moving forward. And certainly, if you have more people who do that prevention work, really keeps units in service so that they can respond to calls. And again, to mirror the police aid program, a cadet intern program that builds a pipeline of future firefighter paramedic candidates. Next, transitioning to our 2024 capital improvement program. Just looking at some of the major projects, overall budget was about $10 million. You can see our largest project being finalizing and completing the North Lakefront Bluff Stabilization Rebootment Project, about $2.2 million. The next two items are two bridge replacements on 6th Street. In total, for the two, is about $2.8 million, and that's design and construction. And as the council may recall, 80% of that's being paid for by federal overhead. So we're very thankful for our partners, both at the state and federal level, and being able to leverage those grant dollars. We have $1 million budgeted for our annual road improvement program. Do have about $550,000 for parking lot replacement. And again, these are local grant dollars through MMSD. Street light LED upgrades, about $425,000. Again, about 80% of this is covered by federal grant dollars as well. We do have a front loader replacement, as well as our annual light truck fleet program, replacing the police station chiller, rehabilitation of Chapel Hills Park, retrofitting some of the existing infrastructure for some pickleball courts, updating basketball courts, so on and so forth. And then starting some design work on the next section of the lakefront and the bluff stabilization, and then the core IT network replacement. So looking at, you know, how does everything in the budget translate to impacts on our property owners? So the budget is asking for a city tax levy of $26,190,752, and that yields a projected tax rate of 5.08, so $5.80 for 2024. You can see what last year's levy looked like, the tax rate was 5.68. So slight increase in the tax rate by about 2.1%, but again, we're making nearly a $2 million investment in our public safety agencies with this budget. So something that we would expect. It's actually a lot smaller than I would have anticipated, given that type of investment. The city only portion of the tax bill is projected to be $1,876.12, and that's for a median assessed home in this community, which is $323,700. And then the public safety staffing plan that's included in the budget and contemplated tonight would, of that amount, $113.52 per year. So comes out to $9.46 per month. And then lastly, I just wanted to show the common council what an annual and monthly tax bill looks like for that median assessed home in this community. So again, you can see the total tax dollars is $1,876.12. You can see how that's split out amongst the various programs and services that Oak Creek offers, and then the percent of taxes. So certainly, you'll, you'll see on the public safety side, about 50% of all tax dollars go to support the police and fire departments. Next largest, you'll see in the development category, a significant portion of that is the tax increment district levy, so the tax dollars that go to the various TIDS that help with those development, public improvements or incentives. And then you'll see next largest, so on, Public Works, Refuge, and so on and so forth. Then you'll see at the bottom, there's debt service as well, at 6%. And again, if the council recalls, the reason we could fund the public safety staffing plan is through utilizing exception to our levy limit for debt service. So you can see that's what this amount correlates to, this $113.52, or $9.46 a month. So overall, for all the city programs and services that are offered, median home that's valued in this community would pay about $156 per month for those services, which, if you look at that relative to other bills that households may have, I think that's a pretty good value proposition for our property owners. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Before we do that, we'll call out for the public, for the public hearing. We'll make three calls. Anybody wishing to speak on the budget? This will be the first call. Second call, anybody wishing to speak on the 2024 budget? Please approach podium, name and address, please. Third and final call, anybody wishing to speak? We will now close the public hearing and go to item eight, which is consideration of an ordinance adopting the 2024 budget and making appropriations. At this time, council, Steve?
Probably end up just going down the line here.
All right.
So I get, I just want to say thank you to everybody. Max, I think drives the train here to get this thing in front of us every year. And I will say, my first budget 10 years ago or so was, was tough to understand. I mean, and then we almost went most of the day and even had an additional one, but between Andrew and Max and all the department heads that have that input, you guys have whittled it down to a half a day on a Friday, and it's very, very easy to understand. And so I appreciate that. If y'all recall back, y'all, I'm sorry, south side of Milwaukee County, right, y'all? If, if you recall back at the Strategic Action Plan Workshop, we, several, several of us have said that, you know, that we're done with hiring one police officer, one firefighter, or we don't have the money for that year after year after year, and that we really got to find a way to hire multiple police officers and firefighters. It just has to be done. The city's growing, it just has to be done. And so again, another compliment to, to Max and Andrew, and especially the chiefs, Chief Decker and Chief Krasik and his team for coming up with a rather, I won't say unique, but a creative way to find the, the answer to our dilemma back at, in that Strategic Action Plan Workshop. So one of the things we talked about at Personal Finance is that we all have to be behind this, the three of us, the three aldermen who are, are on that committee. And then we have to make sure that the other three are on board, and we all have the right talking points and the right information so that we can go out and talk to members in the community about this plan. And I, I don't know who authored these, but again, thank you, because it's exactly what we need when we go out and talk to the citizens. Well, why are, why are my taxes potentially going to go up, or why are you doing this? Well, this is why. And I have taken every opportunity I could, since the thought of, of having this tax, or this levy limit exemption, and I have had 100% in favor of what we are doing. Especially when you break it down to what it's going to cost a month versus, you know, what, what your cell phone bill might be, what your, you know, your cable bill might be. And, you know, I have, I have some great neighbors that walk by my house every day, and we have discussed this multiple times. And I know, even out, even out at The Rock, I was umpiring, and I ran across a resident who was a dad, and it came up in between innings. And I'm telling you, they, they were in favor of it. So, you know, wherever I could, I promoted this program, and I'm, I'm just happy that we're doing this. I mean, I think the citizens are going to benefit immensely from, from what we do. And to the chiefs, I mean, we're, hopefully, we're going to, tonight, we're going to give you that, that ammunition to go out there and hire those extra people, and we look forward to seeing them out on the streets and, and in the firehouses. Thank you.
Greg?
I don't have any questions at this time, and not to echo everything that Steve just said, but thank everybody for the work. Definitely something I hear from residents, it's more police and fire. So a long time coming, so thank you for the work and being able to do that.
Well, obviously, this budget does focus on safety and security. And, you know, I think it's important that we stay proactive on, on both safety and security as, as a service calls, requests increase. And more importantly, as crime rates outside of our city and in the surrounding communities increase, it's really important to be proactive, and this approach is, is very proactive. We're building for the future, we've got training in there, we've got a number of elements. So very happy with the, and I found the same thing, Steve. Just about every, not just about, everybody I've talked to liked the way we're heading on this.
Thank you, Jim. Lisa?
Yeah, thanks, Mayor. Just echo my colleagues' comments on this, Max and Andrew, appreciate. And rest of the staff, the hard work that went into, obviously, gathering the, the resources, ushering this, this budget through its process. Obviously, the community continues to grow and evolve, and you've, you've committed the time and effort to make sure the organization can deliver what the community is expecting of it. We appreciate the time to, to find a way to answer the, the question that's been lingering out there, how to increase the investment under Safety Services. A lot of late work, Max, appreciate that sincerely. Community has spoken on that in, in many of the past surveys we've done. Our Strategic Action Plan calls out the necessity of that, and we appreciate the fact that you guys delivered a plan that makes that happen at a reasonable investment. So with that said, good work, we appreciate it, so good luck.
Chris?
I just think that this is really a nice, value-added thing for our citizens, and they're really going to look, reap the benefits of this. And I know, every time I get a call, I, I'm going to have, be able to tell them with confidence that they'll be taken care of. So thank you to the staff members on, everywhere across all city for getting all of this information together, because it was a huge undertaking. And, and then to the chiefs, thank you for coming up with a game plan that we can bring to, to the citizens and let them know why we're doing it. So thank you very much.
Chris, Andrew?
Thanks, Mayor. She's really, really proud of this budget. You know, I've, I've done 18 of these, and I can think of nowhere along the way that there has been such sheer enhancement to the services that we deliver to the community in one budget cycle. There's a lot of people to thank for that, and everybody did their part here. You know, what we don't see and what we're not talking about is all those other department directors that were able to hold the line, knowing what the priorities were for this year, knowing what we wanted to get done. Just the amount of effort that goes into the budget. This isn't even the end of the journey. Our final budget is, did we break 500 pages yet, Max? Somewhere in there, 475. So there's a lot to do after this point, but certainly, it's, it's a big night for the community. Thank you to all of the staff that had a hand in it. And, you know, I know, Max, this is your, your playoff, and, and, you know, your Super Bowl tonight. You geek out on that stuff, but, but we have the best in the land here in our finance office with, with Max at the helm, so thank you for that. So why, what, what is so awesome about this budget is that, you know, we continue to implement our strategic plan for our community. Council adopted our new strategic plan in May, and we work that strategic plan. We continue to be inspired by that and aligned by that strategic plan. And the way you operationalize a strategic plan, so it's not one of those, you know, government things that, that sits on the shelf, is you got to, you got to allocate your resources according to your priorities. And then this budget reflects that, whether it be, you know, the continued investments at the lakefront included in this budget, whether that be the seeding of our new marketing and public relations department, and implementation of our building capacity and resilience plan, and, and other elements. and, and other elements. And of course, you know, the big one and big investment here this evening being our public safety staffing plan. Goal number one in safe, safe welcoming and engaged community is, you know, get this done. And that was from May. We heard that since May. I want to commend Chief Krasik and Chief Stecker particularly because we, and those on the committee and those on council the past several years, we've had requests for staffing every year. But Chief Krasik and Chief Stecker took an approach to this budget that was unique, and they talked about what kind of service outcomes can you tell your constituents? Can we tell our community they will be receiving for the additional investment? So this outcome-based, you know, messaging really helped, I think, get everybody, if there were any question at all, you know, over the hump on, on making this decision to, to, you know, ask for more taxpayer support. And Max found a strategy to get that done, so, so thank you. But really, to the elected officials, you should be, really be proud of this budget. We have tools. We will continue to stay ahead. I know every day it doesn't seem like we're staying ahead out there. It's, it's that way out in, in the streets, in the inspections office, but we are. We are staying ahead as a community. This is one step towards continuing to stay ahead. I don't think it's our destination. You know, we're still in our arc of growth. That's just where we're at in our community. But this is a good foot forward of staying ahead and really driving impacts for this community, and, and that's a credit to the elected officials who put these plans in place and ultimately will, you know, vote on this budget this evening. So thank you.
Excellent. I will try not to be redundant, and I'll keep it short. This is a very good budget. Been around here for about six iterations of councils, about 15 years, and many different chiefs and fire and police. We've always had staffing issues along the way. We've known that. This is one of the first councils that really want to kind of tackle it head-on and actually make a difference with it. We've asked a lot of our protective services, the men and women in the fire and police departments, to do a lot. We stretched them thin. We pushed the envelope about as far as we can go on, on minimum staffings and filling in FMLAs and injuries and retirements and everything else that comes with it. It was time to do something, so I do applaud the men and women up here to move that forward. It's not that other councils didn't want to do it. We may have not have had the means or it wasn't the right time, and that's really where Max kind of came in with this one-time exemption, looking at a different set of circumstances going forward. Other things happened along the way. ARPA money came through, took care of some funding for some equipment along the way and things like that, and kind of relieved us of some, you know, general funding burdens as well. But more importantly, we're laying a plan for the future with the cadet program and the police cadet program. This is great, and Andrew also said, can't be remiss of the other departments as well. They held the line. They may do with what they're doing this year. Road improvements, we're still investing quite a bit into the city. We're utilizing federal and state grants. We like to think we're a little leaner and meaner and going after those things a little better than maybe we have in the past, or the availability is just better there. This is a, it is a little bit of a increase to the taxpayers, but for the peace of mind and the service you get in the city of Oak Creek, not only with our protective services, but our DPW, library, health department, and everything that's performed behind the scenes here at City Hall, that is a bargain. It is still a bargain to be a resident of Oak Creek and live here. I am not ashamed of that. I'll go out, talk to the residents about it. We employ some of the best people in the land. We really have to take care of them because that's what makes the city so special. So I'm going to leave it there. Applaud you guys for stepping forward. Like I say, it was a long time coming, but we did it right. Also, our police and fire commission played a role in this as well. There were also some MOUs along the way that created different positions and things with both police and fire from two local prospective unions that made it possible to make this agreement happen as well. So I applaud you folks as well. So nobody gets this done alone, and we're all in it together. So hopefully, in five to six years, we're all right where we need to be, and as we continue to grow, you continue to grow right along with us. If there's no further discussion, motion on eight.
Here, Dan, real quick, one quick question. When are the tax bills, when are those going to be going out?
I believe the first week of December. We don't have Sarah here, but I think they got to go out by the 10th, if I'm not mistaken.
And will they have, like, the frequently asked questions included with the tax bill or no?
You know, we always do a breakdown of where your dollars go, whether they're county, MATC, MMSD, city of Milwaukee, MATC, whatever the taxing jurisdictions are. But within our website, everything will be published as to what we're doing with the public safety plan going forward. Andrew, you want to comment?
Just, timing really stinks for that because we have to send the, the inserts to the printer several weeks ago, so we were trying to iron that out and maybe hedge bets a little bit on what exactly the tax, you saw it came down one penny from what we were talking at the budget. So we didn't have all the variables, variables in, in play to speak to that, but certainly we have a pretty good plan with the FAQs and the media release and the print publications and just iterations of things we can do down the road as we're hiring folks, as they're graduating through the programming, where we can, you know, continue to thank the, the public for their, for their work in, in getting this done and their contribution toward it. So it'll be robust and we'll, it'll be frequent.
Yeah, and, and we'll get it out there. It'll be around City Hall. It'll be in the agorn. It's something we're very proud of, and we're very proud of the people that work for us that we can provide for them. It'll get out there, Chris.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. I asked for a motion on eight. Anybody?
Thank you, Mayor. Gail, move to approve ordinance 3086 adopting the 2024 budget and making appropriations.
Marshall will second.
Roll call.
Alderman, Marshall. Aye. Gail?
Aye.
Guzekowski?
Aye.
Kirkowski?
Aye.
Lorick?
Aye.
Ritz?
Aye.
And under new business, it concerns fire and it is a resolution approving the Milwaukee County Equipment Sharing Agreement. Chief Krasik, are you speaking on it?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Mike Krasik, Fire Chief. Tonight, requesting your consideration for approval of a resolution that adopts the Milwaukee County Equipment Sharing Agreement. Back in 2021, we presented this agreement to the council where it was approved. That has expired as of October of 2023. Unanimously, at the Milwaukee County Chiefs Association, the new agreement was recommended to be moved forward. It is identical to the agreement that was instituted in 2021 with the exception that it no longer has a sunset date, but rather just termination language to give municipalities the option to opt out. A brief summary of that agreement, it allows for really two aspects of equipment share, vehicle and equipment sharing, just in time and short term. The just in time reflects the movement of vehicles on incident scenes where you may be cross-staffing departments, which would allow other departments to say, drive an ambulance to a hospital if the crew is in the back taking care of the patient. The short term operates for roughly 30 days and allows the exchange of equipment in cases where there is a fleet deficiency and a department needs to maintain a deployment level. And if a particular community has a spare apparatus, it could be provided on, on loan. Be happy to answer any questions about it.
Questions for Chief Krasik?
Does anybody, any community opt out in this cycle?
No, not half.
No, I'm glad to see we're going back in it. It's, it seems to be working.
Yes.
Without a doubt. Departments seem very interested to make sure this goes through. We had a lot of them before they were called out, but appreciate them coming out tonight. Anything else? Okay, seeing none, motion, please.
Bill move to approve resolution 12447-112123, approving the Milwaukee County Equipment Sharing Agreement.
Guzekowski, I'll second.
Roll call.
Alderman, Gail?
Aye.
Guzekowski?
Aye.
Kirkowski?
Aye.
Lorick?
Aye.
Ritz?
Aye.
Marshall?
Aye.
And item 10 concerns community development and its consideration of a resolution accepting the donation of the property at 8830 South 27th Street from Sierra Devco Hayday. Doug?
Thank you. As part of the development of the Hayday residential development, roughly at the, just south of Pute Road between I-94 and 27th Street, through the Plan Commission's review of that development, which is now under construction, one of the requirements that you may recall from the new zoning code was for a tree preserve, requirement for a tree preservation plan. And what that does, it, it takes an inventory of all the quote-unquote good trees on the property, meaning certain criteria, and makes a plan for saving as many as possible or in the event that they can't be saved, or having other means of providing that same type of, of cover. Given the number and location of some of the trees and within the Hayday development, the, the owners of that development, the developers had actually suggested a cooperative arrangement whereby there is a roughly 12-acre wooded parcel or wooded portion of their parcel that they own, which they really didn't have any immediate plans on developing. And they had recommended and actually proposed that in lieu of some of the tree preservation requirements on the property, which still remains heavily wooded and is part of integral to their, their site plan, that they donate or dedicate this 12-acre wooded parcel roughly to the, the city for park purposes or for, just for conservation purposes. That was a concept that was favorably received by the Plan Commission, and as part of the, the process for that, anytime we do accept dedication or transfer in lands into the city, that goes to the Parks and Recreation Commission, who also looked at that and they said, well, well, it's not on our park and open space plan, it's a good resource to have, and it's real, it's really in furtherance of our, again, strategic plan, which, it's calls for the emphasis on more open spaces. I know we see a lot of development, always have, but what you don't see very often is where the behind-the-scenes efforts that the city takes to acquire open space, and this is one of those really good efforts in doing so. So based on that, the Parks and Recreation Commission recommended approval, the Plan Commission in their statutory duties as kind of the gatekeeper for the city's acquisition of properties also recommended approval of this, and the common council in their role as the ultimate authority on these types of things is being presented with a resolution which would allow the dedication of this 12-acre property for open space purposes. Happy to answer any questions that the council has.
Thank you, Doug. Questions for Doug?
Is there, is there any need or is an environmental impact done in that area?
From, from the perspective of the resource base, I think that there are some good resources there. This is not typical of a primary or secondary or animal corridor where you see these really, you know, very, the resources which really absolutely positively have to be saved. And there are some wetlands on the property, there's some, some scattered woods on the property, so it doesn't rise to the level of, you know, one of those really significant environmental acquisitions. It's more of an open space play here. There, there are woods, obviously, to replace the, the trees that are being taken down as part of the development, and there are some scattered wetlands in there, but it's not, you know, I thi, I think it's more, it's fair to say that's being acquired more for open space rather than for any significant environmental resource preservation, although, you know, open space in and of itself is a good thing.
So kind of a unique situation that, that they offered it to the city. I think Doug summed it up very well. It's heavily wooded, there's some wetlands there. The neighbors did come in, it's not really set up for development. This will be kind of a nature, passive park, so to speak. It'll, it'll remain much in a state of sin. All right, at least for the foreseeable future. So if there's no further discussion, motion?
Guzekowski makes motion at the common council, accepts resolution number 12449-112123, a resolution accepting the donation of property at 8830 South 27th Street from Sierra Devco Hayday.
Marshall will second.
Roll call.
Alderman, Guzekowski?
Aye.
Kirkowski?
Aye.
Lorick?
Aye.
Ritz?
Aye.
Marshall?
Aye.
Gail?
Aye.
And item 11 is engineering and its consideration of a resolution authorizing the final contract And item 11 is engineering and its consideration of a resolution authorizing the final contract extension and addendum to the city of Oak Creek for the 2020 21 private property maintenance contract. Matt?
Thank you, Mayor. Matt Sullivan, city engineer. Uh, before he use the resolution for that final contract extension with Robbie's Grading LLC, um, they have been under this contract since 2020 to 2021 was the original contract. We've already done two extensions. The contract allowed us to go up to three extensions. This will be our final one. We have reached out to Robbie. They have, um, graciously agreed to go through that final contract extension. The language is pretty straightforward. Um, there has been no issues. We didn't utilize them this last year. We did utilize them two years ago. Um, so it's kind of very infrequent, but if you have any questions, be more than happy to answer those.
Questions for Matt? Seeing none, motion?
You have a move to approve resolution one two four four six dash one one two one one two three, authorizing the final contract extension and addendum to the city of Oak Creek, 2020 2021 private property maintenance contract.
Guzekowski, I'll second. Roll call.
Alderman, Kirkowski.
Aye.
Lorick.
Aye.
Ritz.
Aye.
Marshall. Aye. Gail.
Aye.
Guzekowski.
Aye.
And item 12 is consideration of a resolution approving the state municipal agreement for the city of Oak Creek, street lighting upgrade carbon reduction program project. Matt?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, and before you, you have the resolution for approving that state municipal agreement. Um, the carbon reduction program was actually, came about through the bill, um, the new law that was put in place. So this is one of the programs that we look to do LED street lighting, um, upgrades. So what we look to do is we applied for upgrades throughout the city in various locations, as mentioned in the report. Um, we were granted that. This is a reimbursable program at 80%. We do fund everything upfront and then we look for reimbursable. Um, this will replace approximately 625 streetlights. Um, the work will be done by our own staff. And then, uh, so basically we just procure the equipment. I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Questions, comments for Matt? No, I for one, I'm glad to see this. We had a study done, our, our staff did an inventory of the lights and everything it would take to go on and, uh, it, it was a difficult thing to pay for without, without the help we're getting from the feds on this one. Uh, we've slowly been kind of converting to LED, but, uh, this is really going to help put us over the top and be of little cost whatsoever to the city, particularly our talented staff that'll take care of it. There's no further discussion, motion?
You have a move to approve resolution one two four four eight dash one one two one two three, approving the state municipal agreement for the city of Oak Creek, street lighting upgrade, carbon reduction pro- program project.
Ritz will second.
Roll call.
Alderman, Lorick.
Aye.
Ritz.
Aye.
Marshall. Aye. Gail.
Aye.
Guzekowski.
Aye.
Kirkowski.
Aye.
And item 13 is consideration of motion to award the Aben Shyne Park Parking Lot Entrance Road Construction Unit Price Contract to the lowest responsive responsible bidder, Always Contractors, Inc., an estimated cost of one million four hundred seventy five thousand two hundred and twenty eight dollars and authorize a transfer of funds from Fund Thirty Eight. Matt?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, so we put this project out to bid. This is a project we've been discussing probably for approximately two years now. It was originally associated with the Aben Shyne Park Pavilion Project, which was put on hold. So we moved forward, um, out of engineering to do the parking lot enhancements and the entrance. Um, both were funded. One is funded through the Green Solutions through M M S D, which we had approximately nine hundred and ninety thousand dollars, um, put through that grant, which is a fully reimbursable grant. So we fund upfront the money. We look for our reimbursement from that. Four hundred thousand was then appropriated through the budget in 2023 for the road, um, entrance road. So we put this out to bid, uh, this last month, two months ago. Um, we received 10 bids, which was, you know, very good. It's probably the highest amount of bids I've seen on a project that we put out recently, actually in the 18 years I've worked here. Um, they're all very competitive, other than two outliers. The one low responsible bidder is one point four seven five. We're looking to transfer some funds to cover that little gap that we're missing there. Those funds will be covering carbon gutter, anything that pretty much conveys stormwater or enhances the environment. So our erosion control, uh, storm sewer, anything along those lines. Happy to answer any questions.
Questions for Matt. Steve?
Matt, uh, what's the timeframe of, oh, doing the work on this drive in? What access to Aben Shyne for that part of the park? Have you, is there going to be total restriction or is there going to?
During the parking lot, so we're going to look at the parking lot and the entrance road kind of almost as if you want to look separate little projects within one larger one. So they'll still have some, you know, availability in the parking lot. We'll look at trying to do sections of the parking lot, still allowing people to do it. As far as the road entrance, we're probably going to have to shut that down. We did confine them to about two or three weeks to have that road only shut down for that period of time. So, um, that'll be publicized and put out in the public so everyone knows. There still is availability from parking lots over on the east side of the park where they would actually have to walk over and still utilize that, but, um, so we'll have, we'll have to shut it down for a little bit, be able to get the work done quick.
What time of year they're planning on doing that?
We'll have to be flexible on that. I think our contract's pretty open, um, allowing them to start in early spring and end in late fall. So we'll work with our contractor. We'll also have to make sure that we're working with, um, the potential for the development to the east or to the west, Stone Brook. They have not come forward yet with a finalized data starting, but there could be some work we have to kind of work together on, along with Water and Sewer has a water main extension through that area also. So there's a number of projects that we're going to have to coordinate together.
Okay. Yeah, you may, you may wish to, uh, coordinate with, uh, Parks and Rec at the school district for, you know, the frisbee golf section and then of course the baseball field that is used, not so much by high school anymore, but you know, the, the, the Sunday men's and the youth teams during the week, but if, you know, a couple of weeks, they'll just have to adjust, but.
Right, I think we can coordinate those efforts and find out when those are and try to work with our contractor at that point.
Okay, thank you. Nothing.
Anybody else? No, this is, uh, part of the overall master plan for Aben Shyne going forward with the improvements we've put forward. I think the big takeaway from this is the M M S D portion, um, the Green Solution Program. M M S D is reimbursing nine hundred and forty five thousand dollars of it.
Correct.
Of, M M S D has proved to be a really good partner to the city of Oak Creek. Um, and we've proved to be a very valuable asset to them with our water management solutions we've come up with through engineering. So, you know, kudos to the engineering department with Emerald Preserve and we have great examples of a lot of things that have benefited the city through our engineering department that way. Um, there's nothing further? Motion?
Rukalski make a motion to award the Aben Shyne Park Parking Lot and Entrance Road Construction Unit Price Contract to the lowest responsive responsible bidder, Always Contractors, Inc., at the estimated cost of one million four hundred seventy five thousand two hundred and twenty eight dollars and to authorize a transfer of funds from Fund Thirty Eight.
Lorick seconds. Roll call.
Alderman, Ritz.
Aye.
Marshall. Aye. Gail.
Aye.
Guzekowski.
Aye.
Kirkowski.
Aye.
Lorick.
Aye.
And item 14 is License Committee. I will turn that over to Alderman Kirkowski.
Thank you, Mayor. I trust everybody's had an opportunity to review the items on tonight's Common Counsel Report. Does anybody have any questions, cares or concerns?
All right, seeing none. Rukalski make a motion to approve the various license requests as listed on the November 21st, 2023 License Committee Report.
Ritz will second.
Roll call.
Alderman Marshall. Aye. Gail.
Aye.
Guzekowski.
Aye.
Kirkowski.
Aye.
Lorick.
Aye.
Ritz.
Aye.
And item 15 is our vendor summary report for November 15th, 2023, the amount of two million one hundred forty seven thousand dollars, one hundred ninety dollars and ninety three cents. Please take a look at your report and if you have any questions on any of it, uh, please take the floor. Oh, just one question and it's probably directed to police or Max. Asset forfeiture, we collect that and then we take it back to the police department?
Yeah, correct. Technically, uh, typically we'll be in receipt of funds and then depending on what agency it gets collected, we'll be cutting that check back out. So, uh, you know, no cost to the city.
Okay, great. There any further discussion? Seeing none, motion?
Marshall moved to approve the November 15th, 2023 vendor summary report in a total of two million one hundred forty seven thousand one hundred and ninety dollars and three cents.
Guzekowski, I'll second.
Roll call.
Alderman, Gail.
Aye.
Guzekowski.
Aye.
Kirkowski.
Aye.
Lorick.
Aye.
Ritz.
Aye.
And item 16 is consideration of a motion to convene into closed session pursuant to Wisconsin State Statute nineteen point eight five to discuss the following section, nineteen point eight five sub one sub G, to discuss the acquitus film foam foaming foams product liability litigation, uh, multi-district litigation number two eighteen MN twenty eight seventy three, that is three M in Dupont PFAS litigation class action settlement. President Gail?
Oh. Yeah, we'll move to convene in the closed session pursuant to Wisconsin State Statute Section nineteen point eight five to discuss the following, A, Section nineteen point eight five sub one sub G, to discuss the acquitus film forming foams product liability litigation, multi-district litigation number two eighteen MN twenty eight seventy three.
Guzekowski, I'll second. Roll call.
Alderman, Guzekowski.
Aye.
Kirkowski.
Aye.
Lorick.
Aye.
Ritz.
Aye.
Marshall. Aye. Gail.
Aye.
We will now convene into closed session and resume at its conclusion. Thank you.
We'll now consider a motion to reconvene into.
Thank you, Mayor. Gail moves to reconvene in open session. Guzekowski, I'll second.
Roll call.
Alderman, Kirkowski.